Video started?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, it is six oh three and we will call the Adult County Planning Commission meeting for June twenty ninth to order. Take roll call first. Dave, I am here. Todd, you're?
John?
Here.
Kevin?
Here.
Jesse, Lee and Casey are excused. Anything for, anything changed in the agenda or anything?
No.
Okay. Anyone would like to make a motion? Have less of us do this, but we don't.
I'm motion to approve the agenda.
I'll support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the May twenty ninth, twenty twenty four meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes from the May twenty eighth, yeah. May twenty eighth, planning commission meetings.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right. All right, next up we have public comment, once again, we have a number of topics that we're going to cover tonight. We're going to have time there, we're going to have public hearings for each of those, you can speak on behalf of those events when we get to those. But right now, we have a just, a general public comment, if anyone would like to make a comment. You have three minutes, kind of ask questions or again, we can continue on, but we'll open that up at six oh five.
I guess I'm. I'm Bruce Sainsbury. I am working on Mueller Road, paved Mueller Road. And I've been through this routine several years before, I had set up a special assessment district. Thought I had pretty much everything in line, but it was close and we submitted everything and they decided they weren't going to township, wasn't going to follow through with the special assessment because it was probably too easy. If not, somebody would bail out. Do a whole bunch of work for nothing. So anyways, times have changed, I've got some new neighbors in and we talked about paving Mueller Road again, the private portion of Mueller Road. And I got a pretty good consensus of the residents that live on the road and I went as far as to ask about permitting. I talked with about nine different contractors, got quotes from about five, narrowed it down to eight particular contractor, went back and forth with him several times, got some pretty good numbers with him on what we want to do. Part of this asphalt project goes on being called a road property that they disbanded seven or twelve years ago. They just took a portion of the road, they said, we're not going to do anything, we're not going to do any maintenance on it. It's people that live on there's responsibility. And so we've had that. I'm talking with Paul Bowman about paving on that. He didn't see that there was any problem on that. Haven't talked to him this time around, previous time I've talked to him. Got some email communication with him. And there was no real problems there, the only thing he was concerned about was the tie-in from where the county road is where our asphalt will be. And he just wanted to make sure that there was room there so that his equipment didn't tear our asphalt up. And he gave me some dimensions and support to work on. He didn't give me at that time any indication that there was any permitting required or anything. Jeff mentioned that there might be a permit similar to a driveway permit. I don't know. I'll talk to him when he gets back Wednesday, he'll be back in the office this week. But anyway, I've got a, I've got a little map here and I mean, it's papers for you. Drawing kind of shows what we're going to do, what we want to do. And lays out a kind of a fifty thousand foot view of what we've got here and like you gentlemen, just take, look this over and let me know if there's any problems. Anything that I've got to fix, anything I've got to take care of to make this all happen. Thank you. It's just sketching it on my living room table. Okay.
Who's in, do you intend to pay for this, you know, like a neighborhood sort of thing?
Who's going to pay for it?
Right.
Yeah, there are. I've got eight neighbors that are committed to the project. The project, it's going to be about a fifty thousand dollar project. Just equally amongst everybody. And everybody but one now is good on it, I think once I get good with you people, that they'll be online.
And what did the road commission say to you about your plans, what's their position?
I haven't submitted these to Paul this time around, but last time around, his only concern was where the road starts.
Right.
And ends. His road ends where this one starts at. And he just wanted to make sure that I was far enough off his road, so when his equipment comes through there, was it greater to grade the road than they did to the high asphalt?
Sounds like this is currently a private drive.
It's private easement from my property on down. Let me put another piece of paper here. That was a little bit better. This point here is approximately right there. That's part of the end of Wallace Beach. And the section right through here is the Mueller Road that the road commission has abandoned. And then from here on is all public or private easement. You know, where the property owner's own property.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you, thank you for the background.
I think I covered a whole bunch of my bases and tried to make sure I covered as many as I possibly could to you know, expedite this process.
I have a question for Stephen. Stephen, what does the planning commission, does the planning commission have any duty here or responsibility or influence on their plans?
I would need to research specifically what the ordinance requires. It's an existing private road and they're just paving it.
Yeah.
There are stormwater considerations that need to be met, especially since it's right by the lake. We need to make sure that it's not going to impact water, but I need to further research what the permitting route would be.
You didn't find anything help from last time that we talked?
Yeah.
Do you want to keep that?
There's no doubt. I don't think I need it at this point, since you only have one maybe. Oh, did you give one there?
Sure. I'll take mine. Okay.
I would say to continue to work with Stephen and we get to the next point, he would prepare that for us. Anything that he would pray we get you onto an agenda, if it's something that we would need to be involved in, or if it's something he can approve or something he would need to get additional.
Yeah, well, I come in this morning, talked to Jeff, Jeff says come in at six o'clock today. Show them what you've got and he's not real sure what that's going to take.
It's always a good idea.
But he says, show them what you've got and you know, let them know what's going on.
Okay.
And we will roll from there.
Okay.
But I would like to take and get the trigger pulled on this. And I do have funding for it. And the reason I'd like to get pull the trigger on this is because I bet, you know, a lot of the funding I've got in my hands already, I've already got checks from these people and I really want to get the irons hot.
Yeah, sure.
You know.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Any other comments? All right, I will close the general public comment at six thirteen. All right, we do have three items for public hearing tonight. And general format we'll have is we'll introduce the person that is actually coming forward, looking for will have the particular item that is going to be up for the public hearing, give them an opportunity to speak on it. Then we will open up the public hearing, which will give anyone an opportunity to speak or ask questions on it. Again, a lot of the times we get to the question portion, direct your questions to the board, not to each other, it just helps to keep us civil and that way, if you have a question, we could, again, not to play telephone pole in this thing, but it just helps us to kind of keep things in control here. So first one we have up is SU twenty four dash oh five and twenty four dash oh eight at twenty three sixty seven East Riley Thompson Road. It's a question coming forward, looking for some sand and gravel mine. Do you have anyone here for that particular?
I have questions.
See. One of the neighbors has submitted an opinion.
Is the applicant here? Is not here at this time.
Is this something we would then probably look to table?
This might be a good idea to table it, if you have questions that need to be answered by the applicant. We could hold a public hearing, the neighbor is here.
Okay. All right, we can, when we do that, we'll we'll go ahead and open up the, we have information that is in a packet that we received that explains a little bit about it. There were some site visits and things in there, but we need to have the person kind of come in and speak on the record for this, so it helps us. So we'll try to answer any questions we can. As far as some of the details on this, there were some things we needed to get some specific things, so kind of as a precursor to this, but we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for SU twenty four dash oh five and twenty four dash oh eight at six fifteen. So do we have questions? Okay, all right, go ahead and if you get name and address, that would be great.
My name is Mike Schultz. S C H U L Z. My Karen and I live at two, three, four, two, East Riley Thompson Road. That's north, probably the north side of East Riley Thompson Road and in East Lake. I moved there July second, twenty twenty two. And didn't receive the flyer from the finance commission regarding this meeting. Special use. We did send some questions, I believe to Steve already. I just have a few more.
I know we should have responses. Okay, if you have a couple of questions, go.
Oh, we did receive some email response. I know that it's not the same gravel pit, but it's going to be a pond that's being constructed. And so our question is, what is the purpose or how will the pond be used? Have test pourings, engineering, any engineering we've done as the existing water table and establish. What water level is anticipated to be the normal water level after construction? Or will the pond be mined? And what will be the effect on existing, on the existing aquifer that's running wells? Who does inspections and does final accept, final approval or acceptance? We're new to the area, we don't know the answers to any of these. But we do have but I both have worked for municipal government. We understand about imaginable hurdles. And I know you probably don't have the answers to those. To come back to.
I have a couple that we went and spoke with the gentleman, again, I would want them to be present to be able to tell you specifically, but talking to them, the pond plan that he has, some of the pond is going to be removed, he stated, and it would be dispersed on the property to help bring and he has low areas that fill with water and what have you, so some of it's going to stay right on the property. Some of it will be taken, obviously, majority of it probably will be leaving the facility, leaving his area. That will be taken care of. Again, as far as quantity, I wouldn't be able to tell you, there's a number put into the proposal for a certain number of cubic yards.
Cubic yards and so you do the map between five feet deep.
Yeah.
And then so what is it going to be used for?
It's actually, he's, he stated that it was going to be for fishing, he's going to stock it with some fish, it's going to be roughly, he told us around the two acre mark and comments in there, I saw it was like one point eight five, so just under two.
But that will be very important if he wants to have.
Yeah, he's, he's done his research and told us a lot more than I ever knew about. So he's, it sounds like he has, has done that part of it for some of the types of fish he's proposing to bring in. Again, we talked to the gentleman he had that was going to be doing some of the work on them and some of the things, so we did get some answers at least to, at least start our questions.
Sure.
We were hoping to have them here tonight so that we'd be able to hopefully be able to get some answers straight from them, so.
And my wife and I are not opposed to the idea. We just want to make sure that our first protected, the wells are protected. And then his project is, or their project is as opposed to behold that doesn't fill or it doesn't support what they want to do. That's right.
All right, well, like I said, I hope we at least threw a little bit of light there, not in a dark room, it's kind of hard to say. But we're looking at this point to try to get some more answers from them and again, I'm not speaking for the group tonight, but we'd probably like to see them come in to present this, so we have some chance, a chance to get some questions.
I appreciate that.
All right, any other, anyone else have a comment for this part of the public hearing?
The owner indicated to me that it won't be lined. It's not a fit designed for waste material or whatever. So it will be lined. And again, what Dave said that he believes when he built the house, his excavator probably made a bunch of mistakes, there's low lying areas around the home. So the sand mined, you know, it's, it's kind of a term that that doesn't necessarily apply, but it does in a way, because excavation company can resell that sand to offset the owner's cost of completing this excavation. It's kind of a win-win for those parties. But anyways, I think overall, I would say it's, it's for the owner's sake, he's trying to improve his property for the most part, I don't think his ultimate goal is to have a big pond back there, but it's got to do something, because there is a pond now that is really not functioning. It's basically a low lying weed area, rain levels.
And the depth of the pond is important there.
I'm sorry?
The depth of the pond, the slope of the sides is very important.
He had, he had a lot of information for us on that, he had like a, I think he was looking for a twelve foot depth, that he had twelve to fifteen, he said.
That's more reasonable to me for keeping fish alive through the winter.
That's his, his ultimate goal, obviously, if he's going to stock it, I'm sure he wants to not do it for one season and wants to see it as long, but again, I'm, I'm not trying to speak for him, I would want him to, the opportunity to be able to present that to us, so.
I think that lining is those who require to all drain away.
It's up to the state, right?
And I don't need a plastic lining, soil that's going to protect the aquifer below it and keep the water in it.
Yeah. All right, any other comments?
I do have an answer to a couple of his questions.
Sure.
So I will be doing inspections, my inspection is, it basically covers setbacks from the property line and slopes to the pond, make sure it has the requisite three, three one slopes. And I'll also be inspecting for conditions of the special use permit if issued.
Piles of stockpile of.
Yes, to make sure the stockpiles are where they should be. Typically, I'll do one inspection.
But you don't expect that it's been built to the right depth?
I have no way of verifying that.
Okay.
I can only check the slope a reasonable amount into the water and then verify the setbacks.
Anything about our working hours?
The working hours are specified in the special land use ordinance. And I believe I responded. Are there working hours listed in the ordinance? Yes, I believe it's seven and nine. And that can be further limited by the planning commission if needed.
We can make requests for consideration for not starting equipment until a certain time?
Yes, and I believe your wife Karen did request that at eight to four in my email that she sent.
Don't mind that they work on equipment, like changing, listening or doing whatever, just don't start it up and start.
Yes, that was eight to four is what she requested. Weekdays, eight to four. And two Saturdays a month. Unless it would take less than two months.
As their construction timeline.
Yeah, you have not submitted a specific construction timeline. That is something that the applicant would need to speak to.
We would appreciate if there were a timeline or a deadline, so that's not spread out over five years.
Yes, and the planning commission can require a specific timeframe.
And understand that they can't dig a pond when you have a strike like that we had last night, so. Whether permitting always.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at six twenty six.
Will be notified when the next one I will come in.
I can send you an email. There's not going to be notice sent out since the it's a public hearing has already taken place, but since you requested, I can send you an email.
They're going to have to present before the board, right?
Yes, and it will likely present it in the, at the July meeting.
Okay.
July planning commission meeting.
Sure.
But I will confirm with them that that works and I will email a confirmation to you.
Appreciate you.
Yes.
Thanks for your consideration.
All right, for board consideration, everyone feel it'd be at this point best to table and move it to the July?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a motion for that? I think a motion to table SU twenty four dash zero five, SPR twenty four dash zero eight to the next meeting. Dave, yes? Todd?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
All right, we move that to July.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And the next thing we have up is zoning change twenty four dash zero one for twenty five sixty six Whitehall Road for ELO Investment Properties LLC. Is there someone here for that? All right, if you'd like to go ahead and take an opportunity to speak on what you were looking for.
Good evening, Art Hacker. Art Hacker Architectural Construction Services LLC, three, six, four, five, Cedarwood Circle, Muskegon, Michigan. And we are here today, I am representing ELO. They are requesting permission for a zoning change from industrial, what it currently is, to R two on approximately a forty acre parcel along the corner of Agard Road and Whitehall Road. You install or to build, I should say, fifty nine duplexes on three roads. And I am open to any questions you might have.
I think at this point, you've got kind of a lot of the information, we'll do the public hearing. Give the opportunity, anyone have any questions? All right, we will do the public hearing, you go and have a seat. We may ask you during this for questions, we may seek for answers if we have anything to do. So we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at six twenty nine. Anyone that would like to comment or comment for the public hearing? Last chance?
I don't know, confuse them the property.
I told you. That's, we're going to go ahead and close the, that's right, we'll close public hearing at six thirty. All right, go ahead.
I went out there and looked at what I thought, I think is your proposed development, there are piles of mulch and it's a rectangular piece of property, correct?
Well, it's pretty close to a square, yeah, slighter.
Really? Okay. It's deceiving, it is, to me, I, I kept looking, looking, looking and because there's another proposal nearby for, for a.
Right next door, right across the street.
Across the street, that's what I thought.
In fact, I thought someone made a mistake and then I realized.
You're not involved at all in that. Oh, coincidental, that's interesting.
Okay.
And I think it's great, I appreciate all the drawings and the details. You know, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of questions, you know, usually come from the surrounding neighbors and so on. I don't really have any specific questions myself at this point, now that I know where it is. So it's basically right on Whitehall Road.
Yeah, the, the main entrances will be off of Agard, the roads will come, it's off of Agard for privacy purposes.
Sure.
The connecting trail to the bike paths.
And these will be for sale units.
It will be for sale units, right? The idea is to help with the obviously, there's not enough housing in the area. We realize that we've done our research and there's an rent for housing, no doubt, and it'll be brand new. And two and three bedroom units, so.
We haven't seen one of these in a while.
Yeah.
Do people ever buy multiple units or rent them out?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right. I believe my client is really hoping that will happen.
Okay. I think we got comment from the fire chief about spacing.
Not this one.
Not that one, that was the other one, I'm sorry, that, that's where I was, I wasn't sure of which project, okay.
I obviously did its research, I believe we have all the rest spacing. We don't have the actual civil drawings for the road, the actual, you know, the road installation and stuff, but that will be coming upon approvals.
Well, this approval is only for the resulting.
Yes. And my understanding that the, there's, the property currently as it exists, there's two homes in the corner. Or is that a butt up to your property?
Oh, that butt up to it?
Yeah. You're right on Whitehall Road.
I thought there are, the properties have butt up to it on the south side of the property.
Okay.
East side of the property is a rail trail. East side of the property is a rail trail, obviously, on the other two sides are roads. So I believe there's four lots that butt up to it, none of which are really very, have structures very close. Their houses that are coming off of River Road.
Okay.
Those are byways.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, any board comments, any discussion?
If you go industrial to R two, it does look like that does fit the master plan that is a mixed use area, so we would, again, it's already mixed use, so I don't think that is a substantial hindrance to making decisions on it. It sounds like something that could be used for potential new savings and, and the property to the south is residential right now.
Correct.
Yeah, so it's just kinda creeping, but what are they doing on the north side?
We'll talk about that next.
Okay, well, I shouldn't have rubbed my, uh.
That's, that's also gonna be.
You went out to do the site visit and we could not get which was which. We were going which, what? Yeah, we got it all figured out. We needed to ask some questions on that. I drove by their ruler today and so I. Yes, we had the same thing. We thought that was where the, but that. Yeah, I guess.
Which, which one was the parcel owned by Resurrection Life Church?
I believe this one was the yellow purchase property.
Yeah, well, sir. Okay. So this proposal is a zoning change from industrial to R two that will bring consideration of it. It's owned industrial just because of the, uh, made it soil or is it?
I'm not sure why it was on industrial. It might be because it's, it's in front of the old, um, old plant.
Right.
I were at previous developments on that.
And Johnny brought a good point up, the fact that it is continuing, or it is already residential. Division in between or, or not sending something or it does have a good flow to it, yeah, the opportunity. What's going on across the street? It doesn't look like it's gonna, you know, we're not putting residential area right next to like an industrial like wasteland or anything, so. Probably a good thing.
That's all.
Yeah.
Towns City, London, sewer now.
Yeah.
Contaminations in the.
You were saying that you have some reservations?
No, I'm not aware of any previous developments at the site.
What about the master plan?
The master plan is, that's basically the same situation as the McMillan rezoning last year, where it was slated for a different use, but it's contiguous with with the requested use, so it's, it would make sense. The master plan, we can reasonably anticipate, isn't going to be, we can, you know, be able to predict market conditions if used from what it was. There's some flexibility there.
Does anyone that would like to make a motion? Think.
Where, uh, what we're motioning is to support the zoning change.
The zoning change.
So you would like that?
Yeah, recommend.
Approval.
Recommend the township board.
Okay.
Zoning change.
Recommend, um, moving for township board approval of the zoning change. That represents C, C twenty-four oh one, twenty-five sixty-six Whitehall Road, ELO Investments Properties LLC.
A, yes? Todd?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
All right, we'll just move to the board. All right, next up for public hearing, we have B, another zoning change for Hein Road, parcel sixty-one oh seven. Plan unit development. Is there someone here for that?
Yeah.
You'd like to give us uh kind of the overview of what you're looking for?
Uh, yes, um, I'm Brian Lasky, Sweet Space.
I'm Austin Lasky.
Um, basically, it is a mixed use type of planned unit development. Uh, large storage business, um, pretty much the largest one that there would be anywhere around here. And the reason that you have both ELO and us is we were actually doing that project next door. That's why there's both of these and then, and with Ron Ramsay with the church, I, we were the ones that actually called to buy that property. And then I believe somebody within the church decided to, to do it, which is great. You know, the more development there, the more that is just gonna be, it's gonna be a really good thing to have that. Um, but this is a, uh, basically uh, large storage, holes, they call man caves, you know, whatever, whatever they would be, uh, certain businesses that could go in there, could be a print shop. We, we listed a bunch of stuff that we would want in there. It's a condo that, that whole development in there is already a condo, uh, so we all own Hein Road, the county abandoned Hein and the abandoned, uh, I can't remember what the back road is. So we actually own all of those roads in there now. And, um, I believe you would have all the prints, right? You have all the.
Yeah. We do.
Yeah, the driveways and everything. So we would start at the, uh, south end and work our way across four buildings at a time. Um, and work our way right down, right down the line.
These will, uh, these units will be for sale.
For sale, they will, yeah, for sale.
Leasing, renting.
No, no, they'll be all for sale. And now they could do, like also, like now where some people do go in and they'll buy an entire building. And then, but they have to follow the requirements of the plan, you, you know, the plan unit development, or they have to follow those requirements. So they can lease that space if they were to buy those doors, they could lease that space to only businesses that are okay to put.
Did I read this correctly? Each unit's nine thousand square feet?
Um, each, each building has nine thousand, they're sixty by one fifties, and there's six units, fifteen hundred square foot per door. And each, each unit's got a fourteen by sixteen foot door, a man door, and then on the inside, I do have, I do have some pictures of, of mockups if you'd like to see.
Yeah, yeah, I believe that, I think I have them, um.
These are just, uh, uh, you know, different ones that we've went over the last year and a half, buildings that we've got.
Oh, yeah.
And we're, we're going with the gray and black is what we like to do with the street. And they have, um, some conceptual in the back.
Is there, uh, water service inside each unit?
There is.
Could there be a bathroom in each unit?
There will be.
There will be.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so they'll have water, sewer, electric, uh, and air conditioning. So they'll have, they'll have everything in them. But a lot of, a lot of people that do have these, they're putting their antique cars in or their
Right.
Oh, have, have heat and air in there, so climate control at all.
And work them in the little shops on the street?
They, exactly, yeah, they could have. Like Steve and I talked, I mean, there's a lot of places like, um, any T D and air conditioning people that are working out of their garage, you know, that need a space for somebody to come in and unload all that, you know, unload all those furnaces or, you know, electrical or, or any of the, any of the mechanical people, owners. Where they can store them products and store the valves, the all the stuff and, uh, to be able to work out of there and.
Have you guys done this before?
We have not done it before. We have a lot, bunch of other stuff. We, we do own, um, our regular job is we own a commercial printing company and over heart and hand on the, on the corner and hometown framing and all that. But that was sold off, uh, to come and go, which we're trying to figure out what they're doing, but to build the gas station on that.
Yeah, I was just wondering, it's kind of a neat concept.
Yeah, and we, honestly, we were, we were looking at, we also own the bowling alley, the old AMF links there and the thirty acres there. And, and we were looking at, at this, this whole development there. And then the business park, it was about a year and a half ago, the business park, um, property started to come up and, and the, you know, the pricing was decent. We, we came, we talked to Steve, uh, Steve and Jeff and, and drew the concept by him and they were, they were a lot more, way more accepting than the skating township was. And we're like, we wanna work with somebody that wants to work with us, you know, that wants this type of thing there. So that's why we moved, we bought the, um, business park property and moved the, moved the whole project down the road. And they're very nice, you know, it's, and anything we do is very nice anyways, but the idea is, is everything is, is kept up. There's association that everybody pays dues in and that whole thing is, is all kept up. So it's not a nice order coming down the road, it's not really nice.
Yeah, it sounds, sounds great.
Similar to what's going on at the Adelaide Point?
Yes, yep, yep, they have, they have them being.
The man caves.
Yeah.
I think several of those in there.
Yeah, I'm sure. Yeah, mezzanine up, you put a mezzanine up above, some of them have pool tables up there, it's when they're hanging out or working on the car or. And then, um, what makes this, uh, area unique is that you could also, like, do the met mechanical, you know, you know, you could have a builder in there or, uh, different types of, those types of businesses that would also fit in that are, where everybody gets, uh, they co-mingle in.
Yes.
So it would be, you know, whole.
Would an owner have a twenty-four hour access?
Yes, twenty-four.
Okay, combination.
No gay combinations.
Really?
No, no, and then it's all lit, all, uh, surveillance and, uh, you know, and that's all included in that condo. Association payment.
Have you ever seen M one in Pontiac?
I haven't. I've heard of M one.
Well.
Yes.
Sports cars, right.
Yeah, you know, there's a lot of people that have, a lot, a lot of people run lakes and that, that have a lot of, a lot of pools.
Yeah, there are some that are over the top with, uh, the interior decor development.
They're really super cool inside.
Yeah, I see.
All right, we'll, uh, we'll open up our public hearing. If we have any questions, again, we may revert back to you to maybe address those if we do have something. Comes in or the board after we're done with the public hearing may have some questions for you.
All right, sounds good.
All right, thank you guys. All right, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing at six forty-eight. So anyone who would like to make a comment?
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
I don't know, that's something about me.
Pretending to noise.
We have to, have to close there.
Oh.
There's no other, other public comment? All right, we'll go ahead and close that at six forty-nine. All right, and so for us, our first step, like, following through, if I'm reading this correctly, Stephen, this is the first step, as you said, for the P U D process.
Correct.
Okay, so we are just today looking at, we would, if we approve this, if that would need to go through to the township board.
We also need to have a public hearing.
Correct.
Okay.
And that has been scheduled and notified for the June eighth meeting.
Okay.
The July eighth meeting.
Okay. So our plan is today to, we would be granting the zone change.
Yes. And the preliminary concept, which is, um, we're essentially creating its own ordinance. And that would be, um, restrictions would be on the continuation sheet and the narrative P U D. Well, with the concept design plans that they've submitted. And then those, uh, once the resulting is approved, they will come back for a final site plan review, approval. And that's when we would solidify everything into a site plan. And I did talk to the fire chief about it. He's not a big fan of the ten feet between the backs of the building. So that would be a consideration. He said he could make it work if he had to, but he's not a big fan of it. Would like a little more room for his guys to go.
Did he give a stipulation by?
He said ideally he'd like thirty, but he understands, um, might not be might not be able to accommodate that, but any more than ten would be great.
Okay, are you guys aware of that? Like, how do you feel? What, what's your thoughts?
Um, so originally, we, we've submitted the site plans and, and we had the fire department, the fire chief look at them and, and they were, at that time, they were okay. He was, he was okay. And one of the pictures, past the blue buildings, um, what we did is in, in North Shores, they, there's our eight feet part. So we, we kind of, when we drew this in to get to the right amount, make the whole project work, um, we, we threw that ten feet in there. Um, the gaps between those buildings, side to side and front to back. And like when I was talking to Steve, uh, about the, about that thirty feet, like, I said, you know, that's, that's gonna throw the whole, it'll kill it. But I, he said, you know, maybe we can come up with a common, uh, where everybody's happy and take it out of the driveway, because we got an eighty or eighty, ninety foot driveway in there of every four doors. And I would like to keep that as wide as possible, just because when you're pulling in with a big truck, you know, a ninety foot boat or a motorhome, you know, you wanna be able to maneuver back into there, but, um, so that on the second, when we just had the site plans, it's all submitted, that came up on, after we, we drew it and then that, that came up.
If you were to say do something along that line, maybe if you did take some of that, what would you anticipate that to be from, from say like the ten foot?
It would have to come, and Steve and I talked about, this is where the driveways are, uh, driveway that comes on Hein. We had eighty feet between the buildings. We would have to s- to keep the right amount of, to be able to, we need the doors, we need the doors to be able to make the project work.
Yeah.
And in order to, um, get more space, we'd have to take, you know, ten feet, five feet out of, let's say if we, if he was okay with twenty, we'd take, we'd have to take ten feet out of the driveway. We'd have to take, make the driveway with, between the building, seventy foot area instead of a eighty foot.
Do you think, Kevin, you're kind of the, uh, not to put you on the spot or anything, but. I mean, big, big rings like that, you've, uh.
Turning radius is a big deal.
Yeah.
You think the seventy? Do you think the seventy, from eighty to seventy, is a?
It's a game changer.
And that's what we thought too. Because we wouldn't have went to the next step if we would have known in the first whole set of site plans that we submitted that, that would possibly be an issue. So we thought that was going to be okay. So we had this thing laid out exactly ten feet. And again, we did that also so the fire truck could make their swing in there. You know, they come in and, and literally just turn in there. We did base it off of what Norton Shores had done and allowed this thing, the blue building, the same development. Okay, well, they got eight, we'll go ten. We'll be super safe on that, but hopefully that'll be a thing that we can work through.
Thing is, it sounds like ten feet wasn't going to be like a deal breaker, that they can make it work. So like, if it's going to cause like a huge ordeal to like try and accommodate a would be nice, like, I'm not in favor of putting like an undue burden on somebody for a would be nice. Like, if it's a serious, you know, issue, like, it would not be a, an optional thing here. So I, I don't know if, I would not want to impose that on you if it's going to be a huge rearrange everything and, and inconvenience.
It would be, honestly, and I appreciate that because.
With site plans already in the process too, I, I understand that's another thing that you don't want to have to go back and revisit for a, you know, would be nice.
Yeah.
So, I mean. I mean, it would be nice, but.
And these are all metal structure, correct?
Correct, they are, yep, exactly, all metal.
From a fire perspective, I guess. Ten feet sucks if you're trying to get apparatus in there.
Yep.
It's an all metal structure. Likely of that, it's.
Looking at the buildings, they got pretty good access from all the other sides.
Every side.
I'm not.
You do, yeah. Yep, yep, you can get it from Whitehall Road, Pine Road, Aggar Road, plus all the drives, so. And there's fire hydrants every hundred feet or hundred.
Can go everywhere except where the fire is.
Yeah.
Well, I'm good.
I don't know if that's our, you know, you know, it's going to be down the road. I think with the board and the fire department, so, um.
All right, so our first.
I made the motion to approve the zoning change of ZC, ZC twenty-four, Eagle, Tiger Road, personal, six one oh seven, six thirty-five, triple zero, six zero one, dash two zero.
All support. All right, and like at this point, we'll go through and take a roll call. Dave, yes? Todd?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
All right, that moves forward to the next step.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, so much.
Kevin, could I ask you a question?
Yeah, go ahead and go backwards slightly.
Uh, we have a noise ordinance.
Oh, yeah.
And how, how would your occupants, you know, would, how would you police that with your occupants? And here's the reason why. I have friends in Baton, Michigan, that have a big storage business. And guess what? They have bands that buy those things to practice. And recording studios practically, they're all, they're very sophisticated. They all hours in the night, you know? They're out, they're out in the farmland, so to speak. Just be aware of that. You don't have to answer that, but.
No, and we could write that right into the condo development portion of that.
Yeah.
But it's a good point, we can eliminate that by just.
Well, you might not want to.
Move it again. Yeah, have their own band and their own, you know, that would, I mean, that's interesting. I never thought of that.
Yeah, okay.
All right, very good. All right, we're moving on to the, there's some communications here. Some township board meeting minutes. A planning and zoning report from Stephen on various things that he has been up to and we've been going on with our committees. All right, and we will move on to new business, which we have Pickers Patch looking for SPR twenty-four, that home nine, at thirty-five fifty-one Holden Road. Do we have somebody for that?
Yes.
You?
Okay.
Blair Ackerman, Nicole Vanderlof.
All right.
Hi.
Uh, we just took over what used to be known as Tony's Greenhouse, uh, M one twenty, thirty-five fifty-one Holden Road. And we got into that last year in spring. And if, really, our, our whole goal right from the start was to not be just a greenhouse. We wanted to have other options for folks and want to bring something really unique and interesting to the community. You know, since then, we have gotten into being distributors of Amish-made sheds and playground equipment. And we, you know, have a full line now of shrubs, trees, mulch, ground covers. So we've kind of taken it from a eight week a year business to more of a nine month a year business. It's not a whole of flowers and shrubs you're going to sell in the winter time. So we haven't really had a lot of activity there in the winter months outside of making improvements, which I know a few folks are familiar with our property over there. But we have been striving to just make it something really special and unique. And on that note, we thought, you know what? We see this as being like a potential, one of our ideas was to have all these Amish sheds are being utilized by local merchants that, you know, like, maybe craftspeople that do outdoor decoration or, you know, smaller shops that maybe not, don't have room for brick and mortar or in their finances for that. So much like they did in downtown Muskegon, where they've got the, you know, the little street there with all the little sheds and vendors rent out on a more permanent basis. Uh, we thought that would be a really neat thing. And as the gardens continue to develop, we thought it would be really neat to offer both local community and travelers from other parts of the state venue where they could enjoy a beverage and alcoholic beverage and do so in a really unique setting as opposed to your standard, you know, bar, for instance. I guess we see this more as.
A beer garden.
A beer garden, yeah, you know, areas where we've got various tables setups and they have, some of them will be very, you know, in around other ones and other ones will be kind of spaced out a little bit and give people that ability to choose if they want to be right in the middle of everything or if they want to go off and hang out on one of the little pick, pick tables or what have, you know. So, yeah, that is the, the basis.
Like the little market.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Yeah, just set them all up so people could shop and sip and chat.
Yeah, that's a definitely something that we.
And during day hours.
The more you sip, the more you buy, right?
Right, yeah. Yeah, it'd be, it'd be localized with day, you know, during the daytime.
Day drinkers only, huh?
No.
We're not.
Maybe, maybe in the future, we'll, yeah.
We're, we're, we're looking more at creating a, really, a tasteful environment with it. I guess what we, what we are not expecting is, you know, we'll have actually a certain amount of, and we haven't determined what that is yet, but sort of a set capacity for the place on normal basis. Really, we're setting up and designing space to probably accommodate, oh, you know, fifty people comfortably at any one, one given time, as far as our current drawings and designs are showing.
You guys got a copy?
What's that?
They got a copy of the design, do the design?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really neat.
I like it.
We're acquiring the other four and a half acres too. So it, it, like, the property is the four and a half acres that's commercial. And then behind is another four and a half acres, the residential part.
Right, which would be our home.
Yeah, that's our, it'd be our home.
Yeah, but my background is about thirty-three years of landscape design and construction. So that's going to play heavily in everything that we do with this. Truly wanting to do something that would be, you know, rather known, just not in our local area, but a little bit more expansive into the state too. At least that's what our hope is.
Have you had any, some things that we have down here? One of them is the Furman Drain goes through there. Have you had any conversation with the drain commissioner or anything yet?
Not yet, we will do that. Our current plan is basically there would be no disturbance of the Furman Drain just right now. In fact, you'll notice in our drawings that we have, you know, aricaded, I guess, for lack of a better word, using fencing around the social area. And one of those would, would be planned on running in front of that drain, you know, so that there would be literally no access to, to that. Yeah, and then the whole basic social area that we're envisioning would be basically contained to three gated areas where, you know, you're not moving into other aspects or areas of our, of our operation over there with a, a drink in hand.
So you have that chain link fence that would be the property.
Correct.
That's what I was just saying, there's usually things they look for, some form, some form of control. And that would certainly, a fence definitely does that.
Yeah, we have the plan for the buildings to be a hundred feet from Holden Road.
And we'd also be happy to, you know, make any additional changes if needed as far as the drain is concerned.
Do you grow most of what you sell?
Uh, no, actually, we, uh, so we've got various aspects of our business. The first part is, uh, what it was to begin with, which was hanging baskets and patio pots. That type of stuff we bring in as small plants. And we plug and we put them in our, their various containers and they grow in our greenhouse for several months from March, April, and they become available for sale in May. The nursery stock, all that's coming in from various distributors that I've collected over thirty-three years. So do a lot of business with the old, uh, well, what is now Gardens Alive. I do a lot of stuff with Great Lakes Landscape.
Grapes, perennials.
Yeah. Yeah.
As you see, there's so many around.
Yeah.
Yeah, seems like it.
What we're trying to do is because, at least with this aspect of it, so a lot of my clients typically like things that are a little bigger, a little more established, a little fuller. And after seven years of being based in this area and knowing that every time I have to do a planting job, I'm running to Grand Rapids or sometimes farther to get really nicely developed stuff. I was like, you know, if we had our own place, we could just bring in everything that we need for our projects and still make them available to the consumers too, so.
Will you maintain your profession in landscape design and?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I would promote that, you know?
It's, it's fun. I, that is a great use.
Suggesting something you ought to be promoting.
Yeah. Well, that's kind of part of it too. It's like, as someone's enjoying a beverage and they're hanging out in what's amazing and beautiful, that's obviously a big time.
How can I get that?
Marketing opportunity for various other aspects of our business.
It gives other people to bring in their stuff too for local businesses to support.
Let's say a few things.
Sure.
Uh, and it's not the personal.
Sure.
Uh, my first blush, and I thoroughly read through this. I, I drive past your business at least twice a day. I have for several years.
Oh.
Whatever, or more. Uh, I think the beer thing's kind of weird, but, you know, like, I'll have a taste, you know, I'm one beer. It's on such a busy road, you know? It's on kind of a curve.
Right.
And alcohol in me is just, you know, I, I would, I don't know, it just seems a little weird, but that's me. I go to Meyer Gardens a lot, you know, my wife and I like stuff like that. They're not beer free, I mean, well, the, in only indoors, I guess. You can go to the cafeteria, whatever, the restaurant. But not that this is Meyer Gardens, obviously.
Could be.
Have you pursued anything with the liquor licenses and that type of thing?
This is our first step in the process, yeah, we, uh.
I have a couple more comments, kind of a business plan related, maybe, take it for what it's worth. I don't ever see pumpkins for sale in this area at all. I didn't, not close by at least.
Yeah.
Lee's a farmer, or who's not here tonight. I think he might, but he's way over on the other side of Township. And that, that might help.
Yeah.
It's a different season, I don't know. Uh, people like that, a lot of your kids like that.
We did, last year we had pumpkins that we brought in. We had straw bales, we had mums.
Yeah.
And that's, again, we're really trying to shift this whole thing from a, hey, let's go to this business, it's only open two months out of the year, to every time of the year, there's going to be something interesting happening, whether it's fall decor, whether it's even getting into seasonal stuff. Re-making, you know, little factory, things of that nature.
You know, I sense going by that all the time you've got something new going on, a new sign, a new something.
Yeah, yeah.
New, and I, you know, the landscape, the plants, the fence.
Right.
So I'm aware of it, I think other people see that as well. Obviously, a high visibility location. One other Christmas plant thing, this might be too extended into the fall, winter, but I'm a Christmas tree guy with lights, LED. And, you know, you can't just go plant a sixty foot tree, I don't think, but.
You could.
Oh, well, sixty, maybe thirty, thirty-five. Yeah, no.
We'll talk really about that later.
We're planning on that as well, actually. It is, we're thinking about perhaps pulling the trigger on that aspect of it for this year, but most likely it'll be next year. But for sure, I mean, you know, just talking very plainly, there's not a whole lot of money in the Christmas tree part of it, but there is a lot in.
I understand.
You know, the re-making and, you know, again, giving our vendors an opportunity to sell their little Christmas ornaments and, you know, their little heated shed and things of that nature.
Santa to show up.
Maybe.
Yeah.
So, anyway, it's very creative, I admire that.
How many, how many parking spots do you plan?
Parking lot?
We just, and we're further developing what I guess would be considered the northwestern portion of the drawing. And that area, after that's cleared, we will still, how would they, what did we say? Probably about a hundred carons or something like that?
At least.
Up to a hundred, because sometimes we have things going on, we're bringing some people like that, so.
Neat concept.
Yeah, thank you.
Very cool.
Lot more fun than my critical care nursing job.
Nicole was, yeah, she was a travel nurse for ten years, so.
Nurseries and greenhouses are interesting to walk through, period. If you can just get the people there.
Yep.
Absolutely.
We were busy on Mother's Day, we went through eighty-five percent of our baskets.
Very quickly.
People love to come rock through the gardens.
I think our favorite thing we've heard so far is just folks come in and very sincerely say, thank you. And we're like, for? And they're like, just our area here, it needed something like what you guys are doing. And you guys are sort of adding an element of, you know, not only excitement for the future.
One twenty's a little staid.
Yeah, well, I never knew that. I'm kind of transplant, so. I mean, I always thought the area was beautiful, you know? And I had a lot of people say, oh, it's a little, you know? And what you guys are bringing too is really, you know, they mentioned the other businesses that are in our little area. And I've had a lot of people just saying, you guys, you, those guys, those guys, and those guys. And what you guys are all doing is, is really wonderful for the community, so. We, uh, that surprised me, I wasn't really anticipating that, frankly, but it's been cool.
Well, we had something similar, kind of along these lines, talked about in one of our last meetings, further down, further south.
Yeah.
On one twenty.
Yeah.
So, you know, multiple people, people are thinking the same kind of general ballpark. Yeah, it sounds really.
Maybe you'll have a part two on Whitehall Road. These guys could turn into Pickers, Pickers Pets Part Two.
Steven, do you have any reservations, any hesitancies? Anything we're not thinking about?
I do not, just fearing complications with the Water Resources Commissioner's office. They'll have to do their review with any commercial changes or developments on a parcel that drain goes through.
We can approve this.
Yeah, we can approve the zoning, just, I would make it contingent on the drain commissioner's approval.
And maybe.
Just to make sure that we're covering that base as well.
The liquor license will open up a whole range of elements that could affect physical things there.
We're aware.
Yeah.
All right, gentlemen, do we have someone that would like to make a motion?
What are we motioning for? This is, we don't do, it's not the liquor.
To approve the site planner view, so they'd have zoning approval to commence the use, to construct the here garden.
Expansion of the current.
Yeah, do all the expansions that they laid out on the, on the site plan, so that the shops open up Amish sheds.
Motion approved, SPR twenty-four, that's code nine, for the proposed site plan. Continuing to, as mentioned by Steve, the drain commission. Support.
Take a roll call vote. Did he? Yes. Todd?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Right, we are to, uh, the last thing on our agenda for tonight. I'll make this one. I make a motion to adjourn. All the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Close that at seven fourteen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.